Well, good afternoon to all of our Hamilton Huskies and families who are joining us for our Town Hall. I am your proud principal, Christian Sawyer, and I extend a special welcome this evening to our interpreters and our families who are joining us through our interpretation services. Very grateful to have our interpreters with us and to have a multilingual community, part of what makes Hamilton so special. If you notice on our screen, if you are joining us and would like to have Spanish interpretation, you have the number and the PIN to, the PIN number as well. And also, we have Arabic interpretation, and the phone number is listed, as is the PIN number on the screen. So if you would like to use those services, please feel free to call those numbers and use the PIN numbers to access interpretation. We are grateful you're a part of the Hamilton family. Husky. So we also have a way for you to submit your questions throughout the Town Hall, and we will answer questions at the end of our overview for you. So you can go to the link, excuse me, you can go to the website, And we look forward to seeing your questions and answering as many as we can in our time this evening. Before we get started, I want to also say I am very grateful to be joined by our awesome school leaders, Ms. Gwen Victor and Ms. Amber Shear. And we will join together as a team and share a lot about our planning for our hybrid return. And Husky. So I want to start off with some good news. So we, we received some news right before we went into our holiday break, that Hamilton has moved in our status from intensive tier to universal tier, which we're excited about because it means that our data is moving in a good direction and Hamilton is making important progress. So a lot of hard work, a lot of belief in the school, and a lot of teamwork has gone into this progress. I also want to share some more good news. We found out that DPS is studying Hamilton as a school demonstrating important progress with closing the opportunity gap with our Black students. We're particularly excited about this because we are very committed to the Black Excellence Resolution and as a core commitment at Hamilton in closing the opportunity gap and the important achievement gap work in this way. We also successfully launched our third quarter. So hopefully, our Huskies are back in their classes, building those strong relationships with their teachers and their peers and moving forward in their learning. We also celebrate that our advisory program continues to be a successful new component of our school. A lot of teammates have worked very hard to launch our advisory program this school year. Across all three grades, our students are scoring significantly higher in math than compared to last year at this time. So we're proud of our math students and our teachers. And our faculty continues to achieve great things in the profession. Ms. Rhonda Keel has been accepted into a prestigious teacher leadership cohort in Denver Public Schools. Very proud of Ms. Keel. Just another representation of our amazing teachers and team members and educators at Hamilton. So I'm going to share with you our timeline for our planned return to in-person learning. So we had our Teal Day on January 4th. On January 5th, we started successfully into quarter three. And on January 8th, this coming Friday, which is tomorrow, we will have an asynchronous day for our AN and MI centers to plan and set up because our Special Education Center programs will start in-person learning on Monday, January 11th. For all other students this coming Monday, January 11th, we will have an asynchronous learning day. That means that students will still have school, they will still have learning, but it will be asynchronous. Their assigned, their teachers will give them assignments and learning to do because teachers will be in team training on hybrid learning, technology, classroom specifications, classroom setup. And teachers will also be setting up their classrooms in the afternoon for in-person return. January 19th, that would be Tuesday, January 19th, after our national recognition of Dr. Martin Luther King Day, we will have another asynchronous day for all students as we, as a team, retrain on all of the health and safety protocols, arrival dismissal, logistics, and we will be preparing for important orientation days for our students. Those orientation days will happen on January 26th, 27th, and 28th. So we have finalized those dates as we have it, that's why we have it highlighted, that the 26th, 27th, and 28th will be the orientation days for students who are coming back in person. As we get closer to those days, we will give you much more information, though I do have a slide to share with you about that today. February 1st, we'll be launching our hybrid model totally across the school. So as you can see, this is a phased plan, just like across DPS. Secondary schools are moving through a similar timeline, all back in hybrid learning by February 1st. So as I just mentioned, here is some more information on those orientation days. So you can see that Tuesday, the 26th, is our orientation day for sixth graders who selected in-person learning. Now you'll notice that those days are broken up between the different cohorts. So in the morning, 9:00 to 11:15, the sixth grade Cohort A will come in for your in-person learning orientation. And then in the afternoon, 1:00 to 3:15, sixth graders in Cohort B. All other students have a virtual learning day on the 26th. And then on the 27th, that would be Wednesday, seventh graders have the same type of orientation. Please note, sixth graders will be back to virtual learning. And then on Thursday, the 28th, we, our eighth graders will have orientation, again, broken into cohorts, Cohort A and Cohort B. You might wonder, why are we doing orientations for in-person students? Because our in-person students have a lot, they have to learn about all the logistics, and we have to practice that. How do we come into the building? How do we dismiss from the building? How do we go to lunch? How do we sit in the classroom in, and social distance? So there's a lot of learning and a lot of practicing for students who've selected in-person learning. We also have broken it down across the grades so that we can all focus and support each grade level and welcome them back to school. So for example, our social workers and our counselors can all focus on our sixth grade on the 26th. And then the same for the seventh and the same for the eighth. So each grade level gets a lot of specialized attention. On February 1st, all Cohort A students return to Hamilton, and then we have all Cohort B students starting on Wednesday, February 3rd. If you've just joined us, we want to welcome you. You can submit your questions at that website, and we do have interpretation in Spanish and Arabic available to you, and there are the phone numbers and the PINs. Welcome, and we are glad you are here. Husky. I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Ms. Shear, who's going to talk about our learning model for our third quarter and our hybrid return. Good evening, Ms. Shear.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Good evening and good evening, good evening, Hamilton community. I'm going to talk a little bit about our learning model for quarter three. To start with, you know, our Hamilton values, which is whole child, every child. It is important that we open our building to students again. And safety is of paramount importance. So we really want to stress that as we open the building again, masks are required. Health checks will happen daily, and social distancing for everyone is required. In-person learning, we do know, has important benefits. The middle school connections, so students can see each other in class, at lunch, at recess. There is enhanced learning in the classroom. There are more social emotional supports. There's the health office and important nutritional services. We do need to make our virtual-only students learning just as powerful. Classroom learning will look different in quarter three due to health and safety guidelines. Some essentials to know. Academic progress, we have made really important academic progress in quarters one and two, as Dr. Sawyer pointed out, and we must continue to deepen our students' learning in quarter three. We cannot lose this important momentum that we have built up in this first semester. We will have a continued curricular sequence. So we believe it's important not to disrupt our student's scope and sequence of learning too much. And we want to deepen our relationships. We believe the supportive relationships students have built with their cohort peers in Semester One should be maintained. And then we also are launching Wednesday learning. We designed a schedule coming into the year to be as fluid as possible through the quarter three transition. And we also have, as you know, this was the same as, as if we were going back in person in quarter two, we will have a 3:15 dismissal. This is very important for our staff planning requirements. And we also want you to know, unless your scholar has an IEP stipulation, there is no transportation as of right now. Secondary schools do not have access to transportation and buses. And we will be continuously studying and getting better and doing better and improving. Our model, we will have the teacher in the classroom with many, many with enhancing technology. We're looking at how we start live streaming, and we're looking at how we use document cameras and Promethean boards and, and other tools to support in-classroom learning with technology. We will have A or B in-person cohorts. So scholars will be in their section cohort. So most of you know 61, 62 for, for some of your scholars and et cetera. And then they will then be placed for in-person learning in either A or B. We really want to make sure that we are limiting the number of students so that we can make sure that we follow those really important health and safety parameters. All other students during that time, if A students are in class, all other students will be online virtually. So students will still be online and still be learning virtually. In some cases, the teacher will also be virtual and will be connected into the classroom. We will have educators and support staff in the classroom to help and support with this setup. Our enhancements, we will have more student social emotional connections in the classroom. Then we will also have in-classroom questions and responses. We will be able to demonstrate work using document cameras and Promethean cameras. We will be able to do more group work with social distancing. We will have special education supports and English language learner supports and in-day lunch and recess. The weekly schedule. This is a little different than what we had planned just slightly for quarter two. So our A students will be in-person on Monday and Tuesday, and our B students will be virtual on Monday and Tuesday. On Wednesday, all of our scholars will be virtual except for some, except, excuse me, focus groups and clubs on Wednesdays. And then on Thursdays and Fridays will be B groups in-person, and A groups are virtual. The Wednesday sched, Wednesday schedule, as we discussed, 9:00 to 11:00, we'll have special tutoring groups, and more information will be coming about that. From 11:00 to 12:00, we will have our weekly Husky Clubs. We know how important it is for all of our scholars to feel connected to one another, and we really want to make sure that we're building in that time into the week. So on Wednesdays, we will have those weekly Husky Clubs from 11:00 to 12:00. And from 12:00 to 4:00, scholars will have asynchronous assignments to complete. The daily learning schedule will not change. It is the same as it is currently, and it will be the same as it is, it was in quarter two, with the only exception that that period for 3:15 to 4:00 will be asynchronous. And so it won't necessarily be office hours. There will be some time for students to see teachers, and that time will be asynchronous, and students will be dismissed at 3:15 if they are in-person. And again, if you've just joined us, please submit your questions, And please call in for interpretation if you need interpretation. Now I'm going to hand it over to my colleague Gwen, who's going to talk more about our health and safety protocols for returning in-person.
Thank you, Ms. Shear, and good evening, everyone, and thank you again for joining us. And so personal protection for staff and students. And I think we've talked about this a lot, and so we all probably have this memorized, but we're still going to take some time and, and go through this. So all staff and students must wear a mask at all times, except when eating, drinking, or on a mass break. And we've made sure to plan a mass break for students in the middle of the day, as you saw with the schedule. Six feet distance must be maintained everywhere, everywhere except in the classroom. Three feet is acceptable, but we've also put our students and teachers in our largest classrooms so that they can spread out even more. If wearing a face shield, it must be worn with a mask. And so a face shield is not okay to be worn by itself. Wash hands or use hand sanitizer every two hours. And so we will have hand sanitizing stations in our classrooms, and some classrooms also have sinks where students can wash their hands when they need to. Gaiters and bandanners are strongly encouraged, discouraged, and we have masks for students if they need those. Staff, when meeting one-on-one with students, will use also, in addition to wearing a mask, they will use a Plexiglas barrier. And so arrival for those students that will be in-person on those days is at 8:50 a.m. They will join their classmates outside a grade level door. We'll be asking them to keep their distance, and so there'll be staff out there making sure they are keeping their dis, distance. They won't be able to kind of mingle and, and talk to each other because they have to keep their distance. We're asking students to complete their health screenings at home when possible. If not, we'll do that at school, but we will always take their temperatures before entering the building. And so student drop-off is going to be in the back parking lot off of East Dartmouth Avenue. And so dismissal is at 3:15. Again, kids will have to maintain social distance and wear a mask. And we know this is going to be hard for some of our kids, but staff will be out there encouraging them to social distance. And parents, we know you will help us encourage them to social distance as well. So students will be escorted out of the building by their teacher at the end of the day. And because they can't kind of hang around on school grounds, they will need to be picked up right at the end of the day. And student pickup is also going to be in that back parking lot off of East Dartmouth Avenue. So health screenings every day. And so, again, we talked about making sure you complete your health screening at home before you leave for school. There is a site where students will complete their health screening, a website that they'll go to and will be able to, to check that they completed their health screening. If you don't complete your health screening at home, then of course, your teacher will do that in addition to taking your temperature. If you aren't well enough to come to school, we're asking that you please stay home. If you come to school while sick, then you will be escorted to a safe place, and we'll call someone from your family to pick you up. And we will always, of course, respect your privacy, and this will be confidential. Teachers and all staff, not just students, but everyone has to complete a health screening before they enter the building each day. And so safe attendance. And so, again, health screenings, it's just really important. Attendance is important, but health and wellness are too. And so if you don't feel well, don't come to school. We want you at school, but at the same time, we want you healthy and well. And so anyone who reports symptoms or has a fever, fever will be escorted by a teacher to the auxiliary health room, be evaluated by the school nurse or the health tech parent. And we have a school nurse, and we've added a health tech parent to support. And will be, parents will be contacted to pick you up immediately if you have symptoms or pick the student up. And then if symptoms are evidenced through the school throughout the day, again, immediate, teachers will immediately contact the office. The nurse or the health, health tech parent will come, escort the student to the health room. Assessment will be made, and parents will be contacted to pick up immediately. Arriving later early. And so students who arrive after 9:00 will be screened at the front door. They'll have to wait on the ramp and social distance until they are screened and given permission to enter. For any students leaving early from school, the adult picking up will buzz the front office and then wait outside, and the student will exit through the front door. So parents picking up will not be allowed to enter the building for safety reasons. And adults picking up, and this hasn't changed, picking up must have identification available. Learning space, again, we just want to reiterate, kids will always be expected to wear their mask, maintain safe distance, three feet in the classroom, six feet everywhere else. Use hand sanitizer regularly. They can keep a personal water bottle at their desk. They won't have access to refill their water bottles, but we do want them to bring, you know, bottle of water to school if they would like. They can't share their personal belonging, belongings because of safety reasons, and they can't share any materials or snacks. And so they will keep everything at their desk. And so we're even asking, you know, that they not bring a lot to school. They really don't, don't need much. So breakfast, lunch, and a snack. Students will grab breakfast from the breakfast cart near their grade level doors after temperature checks are taken and being screened if needed before entering the building. And so the students are actually familiar with the, the breakfast carts, and so that's what they will grab breakfast. They will pick up lunch from the cafeteria and carry it back to their classroom every day and eat in the classroom at their desk. They will use hand sanitizer in the morning in the classroom before eating breakfast, and then wash their hands on the way to the cafeteria before getting lunch. And again, hand sanitizer will be in the classroom so that they can use that frequently. And then some of our classrooms also have sinks where they can wash their hands. Transitions throughout the building, and so we will limit transitions as much as possible. Students will have to walk in a single file line on the right side of the hallway and outside whenever possible. And so our students will actually remain in one classroom, and the teachers will transition. And that's because anytime we change classrooms, it has to be sanitized. There'll be arrows and signs in the building to help guide our students. Students for restrooms, be one student at a time in the hallway restrooms. And we have restrooms, of course, in all of our hallways. And again, that was a lot of safety information, but it's something we've been hearing all year again. So I feel like we're quite familiar with those safety guidelines now. Thank you. And I think I'm turning it back over to Dr. Sawyer, maybe?
Thank you, Ms. Victor. Lots of, lots and lots of hours of planning and hard work, and I appreciate your leadership. So just a reminder about finding your Husky schedule in Parent Portal. So you can go to myportal.dpsk12.org. If you have trouble, you can email Ms. Leahy. Choose student from the dropdown. If you have more than one student in DPS, scroll down to find the schedule. And if, you know, you're probably well-versed in this by now, but you look for the advisory homeroom to attend as that first class every day at 9:00 o'clock. And then again, a reminder that the MEETS code for teachers, classes is always Hamilton, and the last name of the teacher with no spaces. And you can call 720-460-1595 for help with any of this. And Husky. So we're going to talk now about some supports, just to review. Look, as families, you have done an amazing job of trying to navigate these unprecedented times, connecting your kids with technology, trying to, you know, organize everything. So we hope that our support structure at Hamilton is helpful to you. We have technology supports through Daytona Driggers, and you can see his email on the screen. He's our school technology partner. He also has office hours Mondays, 8:30 to 10:30, and Wednesdays, 12:30 to 2:30, where you can have direct support from Mr. Driggers, our technology partner. And that, I encourage you, if you have internet challenges, if you have, would like to learn more about how you use certain parts of technology, any kinds of support you need, that's, Mr. Driggers wants to be there for you. We also continue to have breakfast and lunch distribution Monday through Friday, 11:00 to 1:00 p.m. And you can see, Hamilton, thankfully, we are a breakfast and lunch distribution site. And Ms. Keong, our awesome cafeteria team leader, she has her team doing some great work in preparing and distributing breakfasts and lunches. You can also go to Ellis Elementary, Joe Shoemaker School, and George Washington High School. Counseling and social work. Very importantly in these times, I know it's been a very impactful time. A lot of trauma in our community, a lot of trauma among our educators. You can see that Safe2Tell is there for all of our students and our families. If you have something you would like to report, that actually comes directly to school leaders and Denver Public Schools' safety. So this phone number is on the screen. And then you can see the email addresses of our social workers and counselors who are also there for you. Got to support each other in these challenging times. Husky. I'm particularly excited to share our nursing and health supports. First, it's great to have a full-time nurse. And Nurse Peters has really taken school health to a new level. She built a partnership with Hazel Health, and there's free telehealth services now for all of our Hamilton families. So you can see the website there, and you can click on that, and you can get free healthcare. And that's available to our Hamilton families. There's also the Denver Health School-based clinics. Both the website and there is a clinic at Thomas Jefferson High School. at Thomas Jefferson High School just down the street. So, I think it's very important that if you encounter any trouble with any of this, that you reach out to us because obtaining healthcare in these times is a critical priority. Husky. Don't forget to sign up for School Deets. I know I send my principal's updates just about weekly through School Deets and hamilton.dpsk12.org. We try to keep our website well-updated so that you can get the information you need. Husky. Okay, so we want to review just a few of the key dates and times. We will be sending, I know this was a lot of information for our Huskies and families. We will be sending a short video out so that before we do the orientations and the in-person return, families can have an abbreviated version of this, the just what you need to know, when. We also will be extensively reviewing this with our students in their advisory classes in the coming weeks so that they know the full plan. We will send out guidance on how to complete health screenings and we will continue with our morning meeting lessons for students. We've made an improvement based upon community input. We now have our, our morning meetings inside of advisory. So, all of the students get to experience that. We do usually send it out early if you want to work on it beforehand. And we have a lot of family supports for what we're teaching in advisory so that you can see what we're teaching and you can start to work with your Husky on that. And I particularly appreciate our counseling team for developing those parental and family supports. Husky. We like to say we are stronger together and I know that for certain. Our families, you give us so many ideas and great feedback, our teachers, our staff members, our team members, that's the only way we can get through these times. We will navigate through this change and grow together. We commit to continuous improvement where we will learn together, adjust, refine and stay committed to growing together. So, we like to say, "Go Huskies." I want to, yes, Ms. Victor?
And Dr. Sawyer, we wanted to go back to slide seven because we had an error in one of the dates on there. And so, we just want to make sure the parent, our community have the correct dates.
Thank you so much, Ms. Victor. So, let's, we'll review this slide before we conclude our overview and then we'll turn to questions and answers so that you can have the most updated dates and times. So, this is, again, we will send all of this out again, but it looks like we have, again, on January nineteenth, an asynchronous day. Again, students will still have assignments and learning, but teachers are in that important training on health protocols. Tuesday, the twenty-sixth, sixth grade orientation for in-person students. Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, seventh grade orientation times. Thursday, the twenty-eighth, eighth grade orientation times. I do want to make another comment about this I thought about before we conclude our overview. On those orientation days, we do need families of the in-person students to be sure you pick up your students at the end of the orientation time for your cohort. So, for example, sixth grade parents of Cohort A students, the orientation is from nine to eleven fifteen, we really do need you to pick up your Husky at eleven fifteen. So, then we can prepare to work with Cohort B students. So, on each of those times, I know it's so difficult, we don't have transportation from DPS, it's not something that can be provided safely with the cohorting guidelines. So, I know, I recognize how challenging that is. But then, the two dates at the bottom, we want to make sure you have the right dates. Monday, February first is for Cohort A students all across Hamilton. And Thursday, February fourth, that would be Thursday, I think that was our typo, February fourth would be all Cohort B students. Because remember, Monday and Tuesday is Cohort A, Wednesday is asynchronous for all students, then Thursday and Friday is Cohort B students. That Wednesday is critical for focused tutoring, weekly clubs, additional teacher planning and also building sanitation and preparation before we move to the next cohort on Thursday and Friday. Thank you so much, team, for reviewing that slide. All right, so we will now turn to questions and answers and look at what we can, what questions we can answer from our community.
We do have one question right now. This question, "Will kids be learning online even if they are in school?" So, that is a great question. I can have Dr. Sawyer if you want to take it or I can take it either way.
Yeah, I can start, start out. So, if you remember, we, we really believe it's so important to keep our students in the cohorts that they had with the teachers that they've had in these cohorts. They've built so many relationships. They've also been in an important sequence of learning and moving in their studies. And so, we, we looked at this so critically and we made that decision that our students need to remain in their cohorts with their teachers. Which leads us to our instructional model where when students are in the classroom, their teacher will be interacting with them and the students who are at home. And so, the way they will interact in part is through that online platform, Google Meets and Schoology. And so, some of it, the interaction will be through online platforms even when they're in the classroom, but some of it will not be. Some of that in-person interaction will be different for the in-person students because they're in the classroom, whether it's showing a piece of their work, looking at their work in a different way, that social emotional connection they get for being in the classroom and the interactions with their teacher, different ways of asking questions that are all not necessarily online. But some of it will be because of our, our model and this new, this new chapter in education that we're in. I definitely welcome Ms. Shear, Ms. Victor, if you want to share thoughts on that, you certainly can.
I think you answered that very well. That's exactly what I would have said, so thank you. We do have another question, but I believe this is from somebody who was not able to log in. We will have access to this recording at a later time as well. So, we are recording this and we will have access and we will make sure our families have access to this town hall meeting in a recorded version. And right now, those are the only questions that are in our, our question form.
Just a couple of other thoughts as we look ahead together. So, one of the things I think we've been thinking a lot about is the first weeks when we move into hybrid, we're really going to have to work on maintaining our relationships, but building upon them. Because our students who are moving back in person have not been in our school building for now, what, eight months? And so, our middle schoolers have really grown up in that time and they've grown up in a different way than we've traditionally known. So, we haven't, you know, like our sixth graders from last year are probably a lot taller. We haven't seen them because they've been online. We've seen their faces, we've, but just that, those first weeks are going to be really important as a community and in just really honoring those relationships and getting to know each other in this new environment that we haven't been in in eight months. And so, we've thought a lot about that in those first couple of weeks. And then, equally honoring the students who are going to be remote learning. And so, making sure that they are given just as much, you know, tender loving care, they are given just as much intentionality because we also respect that students must make decisions to remain in remote learning for important reasons, whether it's for health reasons or it's for transportation reasons. We want to make sure that there's a lot of equity and a lot of intentionality around both groups of students. You know, I also, since there aren't questions, there's just some different parts I want to put into our thinking as a community which involve also thinking of our teachers and how our teachers are going to be, we're all going to be in this very new chapter in our educational journeys together of teaching in a hybrid environment with some students online, some students in person. You know, I am genuinely amazed at how our teachers and our students and our entire team have continually evolved and innovated through times that we could have never anticipated. And so, I have full confidence that as we move into this next, this next part of our journey, we're going to do the same, but it's going to take a little bit of time to adjust, to rethink, to, you know, tweak and finesse. So, I just ask for all of us to really support each other through this next change, this next chapter, I guess, in Hamilton's history and our, our innovation with such challenging circumstances. Well, if we don't have any more-
We just had two more. Thank you. So, first one is a health and safety question. This one is asking, "How can three feet of distance be considered safe if this doesn't jive with the CDC?" So...
Oh, I think that is an interesting question. The state guidelines and the district guidelines specify the school social distancing requirements and they are at three, those three feet are the guidelines from our, our district and our state. You know, I will also say that we have, with that in mind, we have also thought closely about which classrooms are we selecting for in-person learning? And we selected the largest classrooms that we have available in the building so that way we can maximize social distance, hopefully even the three feet. So, while that might be the minimum, we're looking at and we have looked at and we planned for spaces that will allow for the maximum, you know, even more social distancing wherever possible. You know, we also have, have created the Cohort A and Cohort B model so that we have fewer students or as few of students as possible in, within each learning space while also, you know, so that we can have maximum social distancing and safety. So, we're really trying to, you know, honor the fact that we want social distancing to be maximized. Safety's got to come first.
Thank you. Now, we do have another question asking how we find our cohort. That's a great question. We are finishing that currently. As you know, there was a chance to change your preference and so, we're just combing through to make sure that we have everyone's preferences correct. And then, we will send out that spreadsheet just like we did back in the fall where you will search for your student's A D number and then you will be able to find their cohort and their in-person day. So, we'll have that sent out. I, I'm going to say on Monday and if it's going to be later, then that we'll let you know, but that should be out early next week. And there's another question right after that. "Is it too late to change cohorts if you realize you are without transportation?" No, that's okay. You can, or not change cohorts, excuse me, we're not changing cohorts. You can change your learning preference to a hundred percent virtual. Please contact our front office, Julie Yakaveta in the front office or Esther Blackman and they will work with myself and with the important pieces in Infinite Campus to make sure that that change is noted. We do have another question, Dr. Sawyer, I think you can help with this. "Will we know which teachers are remote and which teachers are in person?" That is our next question.
Great question. Yes. Before we make this change, teachers will talk with their classes about the, the classroom setup that will be in each class. So, for example, if one of the teachers is going to be remote, if, excuse me, if a teacher is going to need to be remote, he or she will talk with their classes and prepare them for this. And we will also ensure that students, before we do this, fully know that, you know, what that's going to feel like and what that's going to look like so that they understand, you know, they're not just going to be in an empty room. Another Hamilton educator will be there with them. So, that way, you know, they, they will have another educator to support them. I will tell you, we saw, I want to just give a shout out to our center-based programming, our MI, our multi-intensive center, prior to the Thanksgiving holiday, when we relaunched live in the MI Center, they innovated and worked through this model where some of the educators were at home, some were in the classroom, same with the students, some were in the classroom, some were at home. It was absolutely amazing to see the educational progress in the MI Center and the way that the teachers worked across this space and the students, it, it really gave me a lot of hope for how much progress we can make in hybrid learning. And I also thought deeply about how this is going to really shape education for a long time in that how we can reach each other and continue working together, enhancing through technology.
Thank you. We have another question. "Consistency is so important for our children. Why are we on our third schedule change of the year?" Thank you for your question. We really shouldn't be on our third schedule change. The schedule that we have right now is the same one that we've had in quarter two except for the office hours piece where if our scholars are in person, they will be dismissed at three fifteen. The times of that, of them being in class and lunch break and screen break, that all remains the same from quarter two. And the schedule change that they received for quarter three should be returning them to their quarter one classes. So, it should still be the same teachers they had in quarter one. If they had math, quarter one, they're returning to math with the same teacher, quarter three. So, there shouldn't be a huge shift for scholars. If your scholar has a vastly different schedule from quarter one, please let me know and we can look at that. But it really should not be that big of a change for our scholars. When we go back in person, we'll still maintain that same schedule. And our next question for Dr. Sawyer or for Ms. Victor, "We have seen growth in math this year, which is wonderful. Can you please tell us more about student performance in literacy?"
Absolutely. We are actually going to have more analysis. We're approaching, we're having actually our literacy analysis meeting tomorrow, but I've seen, excuse me, on Monday, I've seen and been following a lot of the data and can say that we have seen similar trends in literacy, excuse me, that we, and this is what I'm thinking a lot about, which is in these conditions that were so unprecedented, to see improvements of very significant improvements in many cases in student achievement, we want to learn from this. You know, what are the factors that are contributing to our students demonstrating higher levels of mastery in literacy and in math? Now, there are still very important areas of growth. You know, we're still looking critically at growth areas that we're not pleased with as educators and we want to hone in on. But in general, there are some very powerful lessons inside of this, this change. And I couldn't be just more grateful to our team of teachers who are innovating and, and I was just talking to a teacher today and he was saying that, you know, and I think he's very representative of our teachers, that between quarter one and quarter two, they really focused on small group learning and improving how even in this virtual environment, our teachers are creating really high-quality, small-group learning. And how even then, like Google, and we use Google Meets, as you know, has improved the way that, that teachers can create groups during the class. And he, he thinks as a math teacher, that this has really contributed to some of the growth they're seeing in math. So, we're seeing similar trends in literacy. And, you know, I think again, it's, it's what can we take for the longer lessons in education from this while not dismissing the really important areas of growth? For example, we're still- the really important areas of growth. For example, we're still honing in on how can we improve the outcomes in gap closure for our students of color in math and in literacy. And I know our teacher teams are working really hard at this, this equity work. We're also looking really closely at how do we improve and accelerate math and literacy achievement for students who are being served through special education. Continues to be where a focus area, though there's a lot of progress that we could actually celebrate on that. But we're still not where we want to be. Sorry, that was a long answer, but there's a lot inside of that good question. And Ms. Victor, certainly, Ms. Shear, feel free to, to share from your perspective, because we've been talking a lot about this.
I was just checking to see if we had more questions. And thank you for your response, Dr. Sawyer. I do know that our teams are working so hard this year and really honing their craft as virtual teachers, and how, you know, we just get better and better. So thank you for your response. And I'm looking for more questions. I do not see any more at this time.
Do we want to make sure they know how to contact us before we, you know, kind of sign off for tonight? And I'm sure they probably do by now, but.
So as we finish up, thank you for, if you're out there, we have no way of really knowing who is on the other side of the screen, but we know that you, as Husky families and our Husky students, I bet you there are some students out there listening, you have really been a key part in our school's ability to, our community's ability to move through all of this change. And we want to say thank you to you, because you are also a part of our community that is so important through all of this. And again, a special thank you to our interpreters, and the fact that we have a multilingual community is just a great treasure at Hamilton. We are in this together. We are stronger together. We will move through this and continue improving. We welcome your feedback. We learn from your feedback as we just grow together. We, we will do this together. And we hope you have a good evening. You get some rest. And we hope this was informative.